Black call meeting order, Jackson County Mission Work Session, October 2018. First we'll have a low call. Ms. Manning, if you would please.
Yes, sir. District one, Mr. Guthrie.
Present.
District two, Mr. Benwell.
Present.
District three, Ms. Gilbert.
Present.
District four, Mr. Sisk.
Present.
Chairman, Mr. Sisk.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Now we'll have the indication, Mr. Jeff Arnold.
Let's pray. The grace of heaven and fire, Lord, we thank you for this day, Lord, we thank you for all your blessings on us, Lord, we thank you for the wonderful weekend that we had. Lord, we just pray that you just bless this meeting tonight. Lord, I pray for this commission, Lord, I pray to touch their minds and their decisions. Lord, I just pray that you just help us to be the greatest county we can. Lord, in everything we do, I pray that you help us to give honor and glory to you. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Nancy Wood, join Mr. Benwell with the place of allegiance.
The place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have approval for the agenda for today's meeting, October 1st, 2018. Do we have a motion?
I don't think we have a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Depends on what you'll say.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nothing. Next we have public comment from citizens.
Chuck.
Chuck, do you want?
Yes, sir. I would like to know where we stand on the private security being used. Because that's going to, I've got three employees that's going to lose a job, and I've got one opening right now that I could move one of them into, but I'm going to tell you right now, I am totally against it. Because these guys keep me from having to pull a car off the road. When somebody walks in with a complaint, they take care of it. When the courts need someone, they take care of it. When somebody comes in, we've got a warrant on, they take care of it. Now, if they're not here, I've got to pull somebody off the road. Last week, we had trips to prison. I had two cars on the road the whole day. So one of them would have to come in and do what these guys do. If you're going to have security, they need to be deputized security. And I'm just saying, I'm totally against y'all doing away with them. And I would like to know where we stand as far as y'all going to implement private security.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind speaking personally.
You won't go to those first stages and then?
Well, you know, I would just like to join in with the sheriff and state that our security plan that's in place, that's been approved by the Security Committee, that's been approved by the Commission, provides that deputies will man the doors. And the resolution that you passed says that you will fully fund that plan. That plan has not been changed. And looking at your budget from last, I guess it was a week or two ago, the budget makes it appear that you are not funding that plan. That you are going with a contract service, and that is concerning because the plan has not been changed as of this date. So my request would be that you move the, delete the contract service funds, or at least reduce it to what you have in previous years, it being ten, fifteen thousand dollars, and put the funds back to the salaries and wages of the deputies that have been working security.
You want to address it?
Yeah. I think it was a lot of misunderstanding. When we had a budget hearing, we discussed it, we only had one quarter. So with the constraints of having to get the budget paid, we prorated three months. Prorated three months just to give us time to meet with the Security Committee. And then, once we met with the Security Committee, if everybody agreed, then we would just take the steps to go fuck. And if we couldn't, we would do a budget amendment and put it back like it was. That was the intent. But I think it got pulled out of proportion, and some people said some things about it that weren't true, but at no time did we ever, has this body ever agreed to, you know, fire anybody, or let anybody go, or hire a private firm until we went through the proper steps. That's not what was told me when I met with Bob and Mike in here the other day. I was told that ninety thousand dollars was going toward private security. That's why I got aggravated about it.
Well, that's a misunderstanding.
Nobody has talked to me about anything to do with security, other than words, "We're kicking around some numbers." That's all that was said to me.
We have full intention of having a meeting just on court house security.
Okay, y'all need to bring stuff up like that before everybody gets mad about it, you know?
And we have got to reduce the cost of court house security, however we do it. And there are a couple of other issues that we need to work out that deal with court house security. But that needs to be in one meeting.
Well, y'all understand, I work with a skeleton crew, and these guys take a lot off these rug deckies.
These employees right here, I was kind of, I guess, not happy with the circumstances that Michelle told me out here, I guess it was last Monday when we came in. Barry said he was stopping a Chevy on the station, and he heard he was going to, he heard he was going to be without a job. And Michelle telling me, I walked down there and talked to both of them, and I said, hey, there is talk about us putting in a security system with three employees. And I said, the thing about it is, is the savings for the taxpayers, nothing against anybody. Well, Mr. Monto, he said, I've got a fifteen-year-old son.
No, I don't have a fifteen-year-old son.
Taddy.
Taddy, Taddy, I'm sorry for the name. And I said, well, I'm hoping either one of you, neither one of you is going to be without a job. I said, I'm hoping Chuck can place you somewhere. I said-
Y'all going to give me the money? I can't.
Well, I mean, that's the thing where we're at though, the same situation. And I said, I'm hoping neither one lose their job. I said, but when it comes sitting around that table, making decisions, I said, it's hard. It's hard. And when you turn down seventy thousand dollars for the difference of employees being here, you've got to look at that. Because we're held responsible for all this right here.
And I'm held responsible for answering these calls out here. If I don't have deputies, they're down here at the courthouse-
Right.
-doing something, and they're not out on the rug where they belong. I'm held responsible for that. So that's why I'm here.
Well, I, like I know-
And I'd like to say, if you're going to start cutting, the last place you should go would be security. Protection for your dear citizens.
Well, since we're crunching numbers, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
What'd you do with the forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars that I let y'all keep on my pay for three years when I cut my pay down from full pay to nine dollars a month? What'd you do with that money? Did you even know you had it?
I didn't.
You didn't?
No.
Sounds like to me someone might crunch the numbers, right?
And Chuck, as far as what me and Bob told you, nothing was cut and dried at that time. We told you what the savings would be.
Well, I'm like Judge Hope. When you read it on paper and it says what it says, you pretty much-
And in that, when we just, like I told Judge Hope a while ago, we changed that budget four times last Monday. We was under the gun to get it done. We logged those numbers in with the understanding that it could be changed.
Mr. Chairman, could I address-
We could amend the budget, in other words.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I-
Yes, go ahead.
The way we budgeted, just to clarify for everyone, we budgeted three months' worth at the current three that is scheduled on the door right now. Nine months at a contractor rate. And that was to give us three months to come to a determination on this. That also was what was taken into consideration. At that time, there was one opening, I think, and I believe Bart was fixing to be leaving at the end of the year to take a certain clerk's job, which would be another opening. That's why that came up during this timeframe, because we knew there was two openings right there. So that was what brought the discussion of. And as far as the way we budgeted, we budgeted three months at three people that's currently as far as to the door, and nine months at security rates, which can be amended.
And if no changes made, it'd be amended just like it was.
Okay. Again, I guess we have to sit and wait and see then.
And worry. Judge Hope, you were talking about the twenty thousand in contract services. Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not contract people. That is more of the uniforms and the things like that.
Oh, yeah, that's copy machines.
Yeah, that was a shortfall from last year that we anticipated. I think it was for, but I mean, it's their fillings too, but we, the increase in that was not, she's thinking, or she made the comment such as, move it back into the sheriff's fund where it belongs into the regular payroll. That's not what it was. It was anticipated we had a shortfall because of illnesses, Bart taking, maybe of taking the leave for his situation, things like that, is why that money was put in contract services, am I correct?
Well, contract services does have some for that coverage in there.
But that was the increase.
Well, this year, the ninety thousand is a combination of like eighty-five thousand for the contract services for nine months, and five thousand to cover the times that they'll have off time between in the first three months of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Because it runs about twelve to fifteen thousand for contract services to cover their off time.
But she had mentioned twenty thousand, and I know that's why we bumped up because we had a shortfall. Twelve thousand in contract services in 2017, fifteen contract services in 2018, and ninety thousand for 2019. Well, part of that, like I said, was a bump up because we had a shortfall. So it's not all anticipated in the proration that he was talking about. And instead of the salaries being a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars from the 2018 budget, it was reduced down to twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So that's what told me that it appears that it's a done deal. Like I was hearing the rumors through the courthouse, it's a done deal, we're going on contract services.
I hate to take that out, I kept, that was never our intention.
Chuck, let me, this commission has agreed to wait till after the election to have a safety committee meeting. Not a safety, but a security meeting, in case there's a different person sitting here. So nothing has been done, other than a quote's been done, that's all that's been done.
Well, things need to be explained, I guess, a little bit, or come along like Judge Hope. It looks to me like on paper it's done.
But they have, they have agreed to wait till after the election, and then everybody that's on that security committee will get together, whether a change has been made or not, it's not been determined.
Another thing too, on the payroll section of that budget for the last two years of this year also, that's in relation to who is on the door and their pay level. So some years, we've had a senior person on the door, and those years, the payroll costs are higher than this particular year. So that fluctuates based on who is charged to the door. And the two years you were talking about would have been, we had a senior-level person, one on the door probably during all of those two years.
So this year, there should be a very big reduction in that.
Well, that's the three that are in.
Because Bart's leaving, Barry's not, going to have to lay out as much as he was sick, and, you know, we're not going to have the part timers in here near as much as we used to.
See, that's the numbers we floated around and anticipated all the way through. And like he said, we changed the budget how many times that last day?
Four times.
But you can't anticipate what ifs. So that's part of it.
Well, what is it about the part-time security that y'all don't like?
It makes something we need to discuss here.
Do they get hurt to work in this competition?
Yeah, really something we need to discuss here, but it don't have anything that we don't like it. It's just we got brought up from HR that there need to be some changes on the, don't have anything to do with y'all.
No.
It has to do with the outside contractor coming in.
That's coming in right now, the way they're, they're being, we're just going to look at it a different way.
So I think we've all had our say, and it's understood that safety committee is going to be, I'm sorry, the security committee is going to meet after, sometime after November 6th, and more can be hashed out at that time.
So do I understand that no one on the commission has already decided that we're going to contract? As I explained for myself, as I explained to you and to Chief Deputy Harlan, I have not made my mind up. I have told you I would listen to every argument, every concern that both the sheriff's department and you had before I'd make a total decision on my behalf. So right now, we have for the year, security provided by the sheriff pursuant to the plan. For three months. Is everybody in it for three months? Well, it's three months until we get the other people on board. We know his chair is going to change, for sure. We're not sure about his, and then this one's going to change. So do I also-
I'm going to make a motion next week to put it on the thing, to go back to the way it was until we can meet the committee and have everybody agree. It's like, we don't need to do anything, it's out of line. I mean, just, we want everybody to agree, make sure it's done the right way.
Well, I appreciate that.
We have got to see some type of reduction in it-
Yeah.
...in order to sustain the three percent raises that we gave out. I mean, we have to see some reduction in it, in order for us to have a balanced budget between the two.
And I talked to Judge Hope before the meeting, and we got some idea of it too, and that's something we need to talk about when we go forward, before we can really do this.
Okay, if we would, let's move forward. Okay, next, a discussion item from the commission. First item is DHR, please agree. Myself and Mr. John Porter met with representatives from the DHR, Mr. Stephen Tandit, who is an Assistant Attorney General of Legal Services for DHR with the State of Alabama, and Randall Beasley, who's CPA. And we discussed what we had earlier in a work session about the amount of rent per square foot that we had proposed to them. Mr. Beasley, the CPA, told me that any entity like a commission or a city that houses the DHR, basically throughout the state pays a dollar per square foot. And I'm glad Mr. Porter's here, we're just getting on DHR bill in case I missed something. As I just said, Mr. Beasley with the CPA, said that any entity within the county, any counties of the State of Alabama pays the one dollar a foot fee. The only negotiable part of this is if we take on the maintenance of the building or partial maintenance of the building. That is the only negotiable part that they have. They understand that with a thirty-day later, they would have to vacate if we couldn't come to terms. Mr. Tandit had a memorandum of understanding he wanted me to sign, which would pay for five months' rent on that bigger rent check that they sent us. I didn't sign it. I said, I'm not a voting member, unless it's a tie, I'd have to bring it up before the commission. I said, what I'm doing here is to try to negotiate rental. And I said, the reason we sent the higher rent is that we didn't hear from him. He corrected me and said he had been contacting Mr. Porter every week. And I excused myself for that comment. I said, well, I should have said, that we weren't getting any negotiations, so we sent the invoice and he got paid. Their ones, an MOU signed saying that that took care of five months' lease. And that's basically it.
We've been handling the maintenance.
They've been doing the maintenance. And they told Mr. Porter and myself that they would get figures together of what they had been putting in as maintenance, and that spoke to be forthcoming from Mr. Beasley, the CPA with the state.
Right.
And my suggestion is that we table this, and I'll put it on next work session. Let's get these numbers and put it on the next work session.
All right, good.
I agree with it. I would say the numbers that they have for the maintenance, you know, for the last few years, anyway, and, you know, that five dollars a square foot was with no maintenance, so, you know, we're going to-
There are maintenance.
What do their, what do they pay on other municipalities and counties? Do they tell you that? If they pay, other than the dollar? I mean, the places where they don't have any maintenance or any-
Where they don't have any maintenance, it's supposedly a dollar.
Where they, where they keep all the maintenance, it's a dollar everywhere.
Yeah.
Where, where maintenance is split somehow, they negotiate that. And he talked five, eight dollars, I mean, he was talking, depending on, the more maintenance we assume, the higher the rent. The less maintenance we assume, the less the matter. So that, what we were able to get from them was that they will negotiate those things.
But they will not negotiate the dollar where they do all the maintenance.
So it's going to be a long and rocky road.
Yeah.
And then they went on to say, you know, that the State of Alabama, when that building was built, paid the bond. And after that time, they, we assumed for fifteen years now that we've been paying-
This is the third of fifteen, and then they add a dollar a square foot rent for ten years, so.
They were saying we hadn't had anything in the building from day one.
We have. No, but if you mention the state, we've been out a whole lot taking care of the state.
And I explained to Mr. Tandit that, you know, the financial situation the county was in, we were just looking at ways to raise revenue.
Exactly.
And he said, well, you know, he understood the county maybe being, needing when it comes to money. I said, but even in the real world, if we had plenty of money, our square foot still would block in. So basically, that was the, that was the information.
We'll look at some more information.
I got some figures there today, but I won't announce them tonight. But we'll, we'll look at what you said, Chairman, move forward with those, perspectives later on.
There's no objection, we'll put this on the next work session. Next, it's vacation, bacon, I'm sorry, bacon. HMT one positions, we have two. Mr. Campbell, you want to collaborate on that? Are we needing to advertise for them, or?
The advertisement has ended, and interviews were conducted September 26, 2018, and the committees involved with those interviews have made a selection. And both of those selections are represented, or should be represented, on two letters, which should be in your package. There's two individuals that that committee has selected for your approval. And this, if approved, this would go forward for next work session.
Okay. If there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next, we have SRO contracts, two. Now, I believe, Mr. Porter, you were going to get contracts for the SROs.
Right, if, I just need to know what the details are, and we'll track up the contracts and get those done. Shouldn't be a problem.
Should we change one, Sheriff? SROs?
No.
Should continue.
Okay, we'll try to get that this next week. And if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. One-time payment to retirees and beneficiaries. This is a thing that we got from the RSA stating that we had the opportunity to give the retirees and the beneficiaries of retirees one-time payments. And this is based on two dollars a month that the county employee that was in the SRA system would get two dollars a month during their tenure of working, with the minimum being three hundred dollars. And three hundred dollars to the beneficiary. And this would be a one-time payment that we would make to the RSA to make this happen. Is there any further discussion on that? Okay, there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next is promotion of a MAP employee. Mr. Arnold, I believe this is one where the employee action and appraiser met qualifications of the work description.
Yes, it's in their job descriptions. It ain't, it's not the newest in their job descriptions for the past five years. Once they have, once the employee's hired in as a mapper or appraiser one, and they have, it's wrote out in the job descriptions, if y'all like to see it. But once he has so many, he or she has so many years in and has passed X amount of classes, then they're promoted to appraiser two, and then, you know, once they get two or three more years in, two or three more classes, they're promoted to appraiser three. So this is one of our appraiser ones. It's, his two years are in October the 3rd, and he's passed all his classes. So I'm just asking to promote him to the next step.
There's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next commission meeting. Next, alcohol sales at Lake Shore Waterfront Rental at Jackson County Park. I was met this morning by an employee of the Clements owners this morning, and they were being in the process of trying to get beer sales. And they were asking for a letter from the commission stating that it has their, the commission's approval for beer sales. And I said, I don't believe, since I've been here, this has ever been brought up.
So- You're talking package sales?
Yes. Package sale only to, they buy it there and drink it elsewhere. And-
Does that have anything to do with this? I don't see, they get the license, you know?
We've had this discussion with the city before, because it is in the city limits, but it's county property. So, and last time, we just exceeded to the city's authority to grant a license, if that was what the city wanted to do. And did not take a stand on it one way or the other, as I recall, we did.
KC says it.
Yeah. When KC's got it, I don't think the commission took any action, as I remember it.
Well, it's completely different. Sit down dining versus package sales, I just don't know how I feel about opening up the package sales down there.
I don't think we got a, we can say, yeah, or that. I don't see how we have to, I mean-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a cede. I mean, it should be a cede.
So the store never had package sales?
No.
Okay.
So in the licensing procedure, the city sees the adjoining neighbors and see what, how they feel about it, and so on.
They may have to have consent by the landowner.
I think that's where it comes from.
So, I mean, if it gets that far, it may need the consent of the landowner, which would be the commission.
I think they have gone so far as this is the only thing that they need.
Okay.
And so I told him at the time, he thought it's been brought up before.
I've never brought that before.
And you were just approached with it this morning?
Yes. So you want to, what is the commission's take on, you want time to think on this, discuss? You want to move on it, or put it on the next work session?
I prefer we get some information from Scott's proceeding, see why they're needing this letter, and then maybe put it on the 15th to talk about it.
I won't be here the 15th, but-
I mean, if you have any objections, we can put it up another time.
Yeah, I'd like to get a little more information and see what his, what the next step is. He's came to us for some reason, like Mr. Porter said, you know, it's probably on county property to read it's us coming involved.
But I want to know the difference, why we didn't have to do it for KC and we're having it differently.
Yeah.
And it may be a package for us open container.
Well, he went to the city, and the city didn't have one from KC. And I think it's Mr. Campbell can't say you, and you didn't have anything.
Right. I don't, I mean, I, I don't seriously, I'm against it. I mean, that's just not the environment down there that we need package sales, you know? I just want to vote on the commission, but it's just not something that I-
Is this something the commission could keep from happening?
Yeah, I have to look, I don't really think so.
That's one I don't know. I thought, I was thinking what Tim was saying, we don't-
But they're asking for a letter from the landowner.
But what?
Yeah. I don't really know, because we didn't have to do this, because this is the first time we've asked, anybody's asked for package sales, I'm not sure.
Yeah. And KC's, what they're asking for, KC should have, because that was county property as well.
Unless the open container and the package law are treated for-
Could be.
Standards.
Could be.
I would like more information before I make a decision.
On another work session.
Okay, well, if there's no objection, I'll place this on the agenda for the next work session.
Can you make it the next work session?
Well, then that would be the day, the night before election. Do we have one on that night?
No.
So then that would need to be pushed out to, what do we say earlier?
Election's on the 12th, so it'd be the 12th.
That would be a voting session, not a work session.
Yeah.
So it would have to go to the 19th, which that's fine with me, if you prefer to be in on it, Mr.-
Whatever y'all want to do, I'm just, I'm against it.
19th, I would prefer him to be here.
We'll move this to the work session on the 19th. November 19th. Next, we'll move on with reports from staff.
We missed number seven.
Which one?
Seven.
Liquid calcium.
Jonathan.
Oh, student, I'm wrong. Liquid calcium chloride bid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all recall, this is a rebid item, an annual bid item that this body elected to reject all bids and solicit bids against this. So previously, there was one bid, we felt like we could be more competitive if we- So previously, there was one bid, we felt like we could be more competitive if we had more interest and more bidders. This time, there were two bidders and we had a price return that was roughly eighteen percent cheaper. So that's what they do, the letter dated with today's date recommended, that that item be awarded to the vendor listed in that letter.
We have to learn this.
And I have the previous bids with me tonight, if anyone would like to read them.
Okay, now we'll move on to the report from the staff. Mr. Manning, do you have anything to note?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Arnold?
Yeah, I do got one more thing.
Okay.
First, I want to say, I really appreciate you guys giving employees that three percent raise. I know you guys wanted to do it for several years and just haven't been able to and I applaud you for finding a way to do it. And I understand perfectly that you have to have a cutoff somewhere, but I've got two employees, I've got one in the map and appraisal office and I've got one in the revenue office that's got about five months. And I know y'all said six months was the cutoff. And like I said, I know you got to cut it off somewhere, but I'm just asking you guys to consider, if I pay the difference, I've got a little bit of discretionary money, not much, but it's gonna be about fifteen hundred dollars in salary for them two employees at three percent raise. So I'm asking you, if I pay the difference, would you go ahead and include my two employees? Like I said, they've got not exactly five months, but calendar months, they've got five months in and, you know, they're just gonna miss. And they seem to be great employees. I don't plan on getting rid of them before their six months is up and, you know, they could decide not to stay, but both of them's working out great. I look for them to be here a long time and I just hate for them to miss out on that raise, you know, like I said, they've got five months in. So just, just consider and I'll, like I said, I'll be happy to pay it out of what little discretionary I got. If y'all consider that, I appreciate it.
Chief Harden?
No, sir.
Mr. Porter?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll hear from the commission now, Ms. Gilbert.
Oh, yes, sir.
Ms. Seas.
I'd just like to say, the ones that came out tonight, the heads that expressed their point, I can understand their points. I think that we did probably fail by not having some meetings and put more involvement in, you know, but sitting around this table is hard, like you said, Mr. Chairman, we changed it four times to try to do what was right and we thought, and, you know, we'll look further and we'll see where we stand. And I want to come in, Jonathan, for not accepting the bid the first time. I mean, I know it was our duty, but going back and saving that eighteen percent for county.
Mr. Penable?
Yes.
Ms. Gifford?
Yes.
I don't have anything. This concludes everything on today's agenda, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Meeting adjourned.
Couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, sir.
One, are y'all holding the right to decide on a alcohol beverage license?
No.